Steve Sherlock here for Franklin Matters, Franklin Public Radio, available anywhere, anytime, on the internet, in your browser, wfpr.fm, and in the local Franklin Mass FM radio dial. You have the dial, you know, with the knobs and maybe the push buttons and the presets. 102.9 on the FM band gets you to Franklin Matters Radio, Franklin Public Radio. We're just one piece of it. We're here today, virtually, for another candidate interview for our biennial election coming up November 4th. This is a town council candidate, incumbent candidate, Glenn Jones. Glenn, thank you for doing this.
Hi, Steve. Thanks for having me. Thanks for taking your time out of your busy schedule. I saw you've already posted such really nice, both school committee and town council interviews, and everything seems to be going fairly smoothly. I'm glad that you added me into your busy schedule to do this today. We've been friends a long time. You know, we first met, I think, back in 19...2009? When I first started running for town council, you were sitting in chambers, taking notes, getting ready to begin Steve's Two Cents and Franklin Matters. And here you are today, going strong.
Yep. Lot of lessons learned along the way, yes. But it's not about me. So we'll start at the beginning, which is always a good place. And Glenn, just for some people who may not, especially if people new to Franklin, they may not know you in the history and your story, et cetera. So let's start there and have you explain kind of your Franklin story and your involvement in the community here.
Sure, Steve. I'd be happy to. Steve, in 1998, my wife Nicole and I moved to Franklin, actually from the city. She was from Rosendale, I was from Watertown, to set roots down here and start a family. Twenty-seven years later, we've had the joy of raising five wonderful children. And my involvement within the town of Franklin has always been driven by my deep commitment to my family, my friends, my neighbors, and their needs, and their hopes, and their dreams. As a father of five, my role has been centered on support, guidance, discipline, and love. And I carried those same values into my service, into the community. I've coached locally soccer and softball when my children were younger. But my children didn't really take too well to sports because when they were young, probably around the age of six or so, my two older daughters, when they were younger, got involved with the theater program down in Mansfield, the IMCA. And that pretty much hooked my whole family, both the two oldest and the two youngest daughters and my son, into theater. So pretty much my family's into arts and culture and theater. In fact, just recently, we took adventure to New York, where I saw for the first time in my life a show of The Outsiders and the show of The Great Gatsby. Kids were literally dragging me down the street, saying, "Let's go see this show. This is really gonna be really good." And it really was very good. I've seen all my children do performances since they were little. In fact, my son, Simon, who is 21, he's actually currently going to Dean College as part of their performing arts program. And he's got a show coming up soon. I'm looking forward to seeing it in November.
Excellent. Yeah, there's nothing wrong with the arts. I mean, physical activities through any number of sports, but the arts, whether on the music side or performing arts, yeah, you're involved, they're involved in something, and as long as they like it, that's the key piece.
Absolutely. It keeps them out of trouble, keeps them busy, and it keeps them interested in something that they really enjoy. My daughter Rebecca, she's actually a stage crew head over at Franklin High School. And she's come to me and said, "Dad, I'm not 100% certain if I want to be an actor, but I really like the stage crew part, building the stage and working behind the scenes, making things work." And maybe she'll take after her dad as an attrition.
You never know, right? So Chloe, you've spent some time on the council, et cetera, and you're aware of the community conversations and civil discourse certainly is a key component of our form of government. The national level party discourse really has created a political divide that's hard to deal with. Fortunately, we're here in Franklin, and especially on a local level, local election, there's no party affiliation. So we're really nonpartisan, and we need to behave that way. We're all neighbors, anyway. Some of us are just closer than others. So what would you do as an individual to help, you know, bridge those gaps in the civil discourse?
Oh, wow, Steve. Great question. I couldn't agree with you more. There is an unfortunate divide in our society right now, and I'm hoping to help, you know, bridge that divide. Civil discord is foundational to a healthy democratic republic. In fact, the key word in that sentence is civil. It's keeping it in a calm, engaging way. So engaging in open and respectful discussion on topics of public is important, whether it's related to the budget, economic development, zoning, education, public safety, or community growth. It's essential to a healthy democracy. Civil and constructive dialogue allows citizens and leaders alike to exchange ideas, challenge assumptions, and work collaboratively towards solutions that reflect ultimately the best interests of our community. In today's climate of increasing political polarization, such respectful communication has become more challenging, yet it is more important than ever. Productive discourse requires patience, empathy, and a willingness to listen as much as it is to speak. I firmly believe that when we engage one another with civility and integrity, we strengthen the very fabric of our society. And my goal as a public servant, as it's always been and will always continue to be, is to model that standard of dialogue, to seek common ground, to elevate the truth and transparency into foster participation that unites rather than divides. By encouraging engagement built on mutual respect, we can overcome differences and ensure that progress in our community is both inclusive and enduring. Just this morning alone, I was having a discussion with my mother. My father was a Marine, and one of the things that he was absolutely adamant about was respect. He's like, "We can't have a fully functioning society without mutual respect." And respect can be earned so long as we maintain a relationship with one another in a very calm way and work together collectively. I mean, it's not hard, it just takes a little work.
Yep. Well said. Thank you. So what experience or background would help you serve in this particular role? And certainly, you can couch your years of experience as well. Another way to phrase it is, what do you bring to the table that'll help either set you apart from the others competing for this role or collaborating, coordinating with those that are around the table to lead us forward?
Another good question, Steve. Ultimately, my extensive background. I first ran for town council back in 2009, and I've been doing it ever since. I'm currently the longest sitting councilman in the council, and I really thoroughly enjoy my job, serving the community. My broad ranges of experience and collaborative team-oriented approach as a town councillor has consistently served to strengthen and benefit our community. Now, the key word in that sentence is team. Because ultimately, at the end of the day, we are nine town councillors. And even though there's been times in our histories that people just don't necessarily agree on something, at the end of the day, we have to work collectively to meet the needs of the citizens and ultimately, the 33,000-some-odd people in the community. You know, I had a former chair of the council years ago say to me, he goes, "Glenn, if you're gonna be going into this, you better be thinking about 33,000 people and natural stuff." And I really thought about that. And I'm like, "You know what? That's true. I shouldn't be thinking in a biased way. I should be thinking solely with everyone in the town of Franklin at heart and make my decisions and work with them to meet their wishes." And that's not always easy, but I do continue to try. So over the years, I've learned effective leadership, definitely about individual accomplishments, but working together, listening, understanding, and finding solutions that reflect the collective good. I remain deeply committed to that philosophy and will continue to bring that same dedication and cooperative spirit to every decision I make on behalf of the citizens of Franklin. What distinguishes me, though, from others is not simply my experience, but the manner to which I approach my service, with reason, compassion, and understanding. I believe in treating every person with respect, recognizing that while we may come from different backgrounds and perspectives, we share common hopes and needs for our families, neighbors, and our future. So at the heart of progress is unity. When we come together, when we value each other's voices and working towards each shared goals, there's no challenge too great for us to overcome. Together, we can continue building stronger, more connected, and more vibrant community for generations to come.
Okay. Thank you for that. One of the key responsibilities, and before I get into that, let me just take the moment to, I forgot to welcome the listeners. Some of them may be new, and thank you for joining us. Some of them may be coming in because we've had a few of these, and they've tapped in and they want to continue. For those, you're familiar with, at least with the structure. For the new ones, we'll review that to make sure everybody's aware. So all the candidates did get the questions in advance. There's no trick questions, as you've heard, at least the first three. All the candidates get those same first three questions that sets the context. And then we get into town council-specific or, as needed, school committee, planning board, et cetera. So with that much said, the approach there was effectively to allow us as residents and voters to be able to have a comparable point across the role and the candidates for each role. If you had different questions, different places, it'd be confusing. This way, the same approach, same questions, you get to see how Glenn responds versus X, Y, and Z, and you can make an informed decision when you go to the ballot. So now, getting into the town council pieces. One of the key responsibilities, you're aware, is certainly to hire and provide oversight for the town administrator and his or her team. And while you can be and serve as an escalation point for us in the town, that does not include micromanaging a particular department or operation. Do you agree or disagree? And please elaborate.
Another good question, Steve. I fully agree with and support the provisions that are established in the Town of Franklin Charter, which clearly assigns the authority and responsibility for appointing the town administrator solely to the town council. As it is outlined in section 4-2-1, the town administrator serves as a chief executive and administrative officer of the town and is directly accountable to the council for effective management and administration of all municipal operations as defined by the Charter. This structure, this clear structure, serves accountability and reinforces the balances between governance and administration, allowing the town council to set policy and direction while empowering the town administrator and his team to implement those directives effectively and efficiently. That said, success in municipal governance requires more than adherence to structure. It actually requires a partnership. It is vital that the town council and the town administrator maintain a strong, respectful, and cooperative working relationship grounded in transparency, communications, and mutual trust. Together, they must work in alignment to achieve the goals established by the council, goals that should always reflect the collective needs, values, and aspirations of the citizens of the town of Franklin. By fostering the spirit of collaboration, we ensure that decisions are not only well-informed and well-executed, but also rooted in the best interest of the community to which we serve. And I can honestly speak to the fact that between Jeff Nutting, the former town administrator, and Jamie Helen, who has executive offices for the town, they've been cooperative with the council to the best of their abilities with the budget and the staff that they have. And we've worked collectively with the town administrators over the years to try to meet their needs to the best of our ability based on the taxes and the amount of budget we have to offer to the administration. The schools, which we're gonna talk about in a second, are an independent body, who are respectively a separate budget item. But nonetheless, the town administrator over the years has actually worked to collectively make a partnership with Lucas, the school superintendent. And that has made, that's been leaps and bounds in making things improved over the years, especially with communication.
Hmm, okay. Good. Thank you for that. And the other, one of the other key pieces is approving the annual budget, which in turn sets the priorities, as you started talking about in terms of how Franklin operates. Faced with the fiscal challenges for the next several years, what are the fiscal, what are the financial priorities you think we need to address? And there's kind of two follow-on questions, one of which is that separation between the school committee and council that you alluded to. The other one is that once you decide what those priorities are, how do you explain what needs to be done to us as residents and voters?
Again, another good question, Steve. So to answer the first question, given the fiscal challenges that lie ahead, it is important that, than ever, that our financial priorities reflect both responsibility and foresight. Sound fiscal management requires a balanced approach, one that meets the community's immediate needs while safeguarding our long-term stability. Our first responsibility must be to protect the essential services that form the foundation of a strong community. Our quality public education system, an effective public safety, fire and police departments, and the maintenance of vital infrastructure, TPW, et cetera. These are the services that directly impact our daily lives of our residents and ensure that Franklin actually remains a safe, well-functioning, and desirable place to live and work. At the same time, however, we must look forward to the future by investing strategically in economic development initiatives that expand our commercial tax base, attract new businesses, and create good local jobs. A more diverse and resilient local economy will not only reduce the burden on our residential taxpayers, but also provide greater flexibility in meeting the town's growing needs. Now, along those lines, I would like to bring up the simple fact that next year is the state of Massachusetts 250th anniversary, as well as the World Cup is coming here to Foxborough, to what's going to be so eloquently called Boston Stadium. And these are great economic drivers that are going to be rearing their heads next year and will allow us yet another economic development opportunity to bring some of those monies here to the town of Franklin, add to our base, offset the taxes, and contribute to our local businesses, especially our restaurants, stores, and as well as all of our other cool businesses in town. I'm just giddy for it because there's such an opportunity to have people from around the world coming here locally. Fiscal discipline, however, must remain at the heart of our decisions, and this means prioritizing cost-effective solutions, exploring regional collaborations and public-private partnerships, and using technology and innovation to maximize efficiencies. It is all means maintaining strong financial reserves and avoiding unsustainable tax increases that could strain households and small businesses. And along those lines, I think everyone's well aware of the increase to living between food and gas and just regular everyday items, that it's making it challenging for anybody to make any investments into anything, let alone their own community. So I can understand everyone's hardships, especially with five children and two dogs, wife in a house, you know, just trying to make ends meet is a week-to-week paycheck-to-paycheck adventure. And I feel that pain along with everyone else. So finally, we must plan wisely for the future, making targeted investments into infrastructure upgrades and support, manage growth while preserving the historic character, environmental integrity, and community values that define the town of Franklin. And by focusing on these principles, responsibility, collaboration, innovation, and sustainability, we can actually ensure that the town of Franklin remains a vibrant, resilient, and financially secure community for many generations to come. So as to how I explain the needs to the residents, I believe that transparency and honesty are fundamental to effective local government. Our residents deserve clear, straightforward communication about both the challenges that we face and the opportunities before us. I make it a priority to explain not only what needs to be done, but why, focusing on how each decision impacts our daily lives as citizens, from maintaining our strong schools to keeping our roads safe, anything from paving our side streets to keeping our streets clean, to weed whacking, and all these things that we take for granted, and ensuring reliable public services that support our community's well-being. Open dialogue is essential to building public trust. That means presenting the facts honestly, listening carefully to the residents' perspectives, and ensuring that every voice is heard and valued in the decision-making process. It also means being realistic, that our limitations while remaining optimistic and proactive about what we can achieve together. And along those lines, one of the things I would like to do is invite the public more often to attend our meetings, whether they be town council meetings or subcommittee meetings of economic development, or the capital planning committee, or GATRA, or even just talking about the senior center, I mean, anything that affects the community, I invite the public to come and discuss with us and give us their input so we can make effective decisions alongside them. And my approach is rooted in balancing community needs with fiscal responsibility, developing plans that make sense today and are sustainable for the future. By maintaining open communication in spirit of collaboration, we can strengthen public confidence in the government and ensure that our actions reflect the values and priorities of our people. Ultimately, this is about more than policy, it's about a partnership. When government and the citizens work together in good faith, we not only serve solve problems, but we build a stronger, more united Franklin, a town that we can all continue to proudly call home. Now, your other question was, would you help, how would I help the community understand separation of roles between the council and the school committee? On that part, I would actually encourage everyone to read the town of Franklin's Charter. And it states clearly that the school committee's role is to define, I'm sorry, it clearly defines their responsibilities in section 3-2-1. And that states that the school committee has general charge of the public schools, including the hiring of a superintendent, setting educational goals, and ensuring compliance with state standards. In simple terms, the school committee oversees how our schools are run, while the town council focuses on approving the overall school budget each year. Once the budget is approved, the school committee has full authority to manage its funds as it sees fit, without any direct involvement from the council. And this separation of roles is extremely important. It allows the school committee to focus on education and the council to focus on fiscal responsibility. When both work together with mutual respect and open communication, we actually achieve that shared goal of providing the best possible education and services for the people of Franklin and the children of Franklin. It's crucial. And as I was stating to you earlier off-camera, Steve, you know, the town administration and the school committee with, in partnership with the superintendent of the schools, has immensely improved the level of communications to the point that we are, for the first time I can remember, on the same page. And we're communicating. In fact, Dave Callahan, who's running as chair for the school committee, he makes a concerted effort to come to the town council meetings during public discussion forums at the beginning, open public discussions, and giving an update as to what the status is of the school committee and the schools to keep us informed. And I can't even begin to tell you how much of an improvement that has done on our communication.
Good. Thank you for that. Last of the three questions for the council-specific. Do you support the goals and recommendations of the 2025 master plan? And if so, what would you do as a council to help implement them? And if not, why not? And I recognize that this is probably a layup, given your role with the master plan, but you still need to answer the question.
Yes, sir. I'm more than happy to. Well, it was 20 months that we worked on this, and I was deeply honored to serve as the chair of the Town of Franklin Master Plan Update Committee. That had been a meaningful opportunity for me to help guide our community's vision for the future and ensure that Franklin continues to strive for generations to come. I mean, we had so much input from the public on this, and we had so many subcommittees that were doing outreach. We were able to gather over two, almost 300, over 300 pages worth of information in the master plan. Our goal had been to create a thoughtful, forward-looking roadmap that addresses both current needs and long-term aspirations. This plan focuses on key areas that shape everyday life in Franklin, from housing, transportation, economic development, sustainability, and recreation, all essential elements of healthy, balanced, and a vibrant community. To make sure this plan truly reflects the voices of our residents, we established five subcommittees, and each were dedicated to one of the focus areas. These teams had been actively engaged with the community members. They were gathering input, hosting discussions, and identifying practical solutions that align with Franklin's priorities and values. I also wanted to extend my heartfelt thanks to everyone that served on the committees and subcommittees for their dedication, their insight, and many hours of work. I'm pausing off-script for just a second, just to say one simple thing. When I say hours, I'm talking hundreds of working hours, both between individual subcommittees and the actual committee, Master Plan Update Committee. I don't think people realize how many volunteer hours go towards making any one priority in the Town of Franklin work, whether it be talking about the budget, or talking about their master plan, or talking about the senior center's needs, or trying to meet the school's needs. These are all volunteer folks who spend countless hours of their time trying to meet these needs. And I can't begin to thank everybody for all the hard work and time that they put into making the town of Franklin what it is today. And throughout this process, we have stayed true to the town's core values, and that's supporting quality education, protecting our natural and historic resources, fostering responsible economic growth, and maintaining that small-town character that our residents cherish. And at the same time, we face important challenges of balancing progress with preservation, ensuring that as Franklin grows, it does so in a way that strengthens a sense of community and belonging we all value. Together, we're building not just a plan, but we are actually have a shared vision, a vision that reflects who we are today and who we aspire to be tomorrow.
Thank you for that. Yeah, having been an observer of many of your main meetings, Chloe, there were so many, I could not go to, well, never mind cover our representative, I tried covering a representative piece of all your subcommittee meetings, but you did a lot of meetings. There was a lot of work done, so kudos to you, to all of you for that.
Thank you.
We've covered-
It was a team effort, undoubtedly.
Oh, sure. Yes. Now, while we've covered a bunch of topics, if there's something else that we haven't covered that you'd want to, or at least you could take, you know, this last 12 minutes or so to share your closing statement with the residents and voters watching.
Sure, I'd be happy to. Steve, I'm just gonna backtrack to one of your other questions that got missed, and that was, how would I implement?
Oh, yes.
Implement the master plan? Let me elaborate on that a little bit. If I'm fortunate enough to get re-elected on November 4th, I will advocate to create a master plan implementation subcommittee. And its purpose would be to keep the town actively moving on the goals that are outlined in our 10-year plan, tracking progress, setting priorities, and making sure our vision for housing, transportation, sustainability, and economic growth become a reality. This is about turning the master plan into action, keeping Franklin moving forward, and ensuring our community's goals are achieved for years to come. And ultimately, if that were the case, if I were able to create a master plan implement subcommittee as part of an offshoot either of the town council or as a separate ad hoc committee, ideally, it would be a keen idea to have as many citizen stakeholders part of that, so they can actually review the goals and have their input and reach out to the public as well, moving forward, depending on which goals get chosen, chosen for short or even long term. Along the lines of your other question, sure, I have, I'm just gonna say this really, really, really loudly, hard work of accomplishing any of our community's goals, it takes time. It takes effort, and it takes dedication. And I am fully committed to giving both as a volunteer and service to our town. I'm eager to continue working alongside the wonderful citizens of Franklin and listening to their ideas, addressing their concerns, and collaborating to make our community stronger, more vibrant, and even better, and even a better place to live. Pause there just off-script to talk about a few things. Number one, the Town of Franklin has been named, not once, not twice, but four times the best place to live and raise a family. We've been named in the top 10 safest places to live in the United States on several occasions. In the United States on several occasions. And I'm proud to have served on the council during many of those times when those rankings were out there. And I hope the, the town continues on that path. You know, because Franklin is more than just a home, more than just a town to me, it's a home. I'm inspired every day by the people who care deeply about our schools, our neighborhoods, and our quality of life. And together with shared energy, commitment, and love for our community, I know that we can continue to build a town. That our future generations will be proud to call home. I love Franklin, Steve, and I'm proud to serve it. And I kindly ask that you cast your vote for Glenn Jones. On November fourth at Franklin High School. Thank you for your time tonight, Steve. It means a lot to me. I appreciate you.
Thank you for that and thank you, listeners. Uh, quick recap, uh, the mail ballots are actually in the mail per our town clerk. Uh, so you'll be able to turn those around for those who did request them. Everybody else who wants to take advantage, the in-person voting starts Friday, October seventeenth. And runs through just before November fourth. And then, of course, November fourth, that Tuesday at the high school from six AM through eight PM. Is the final time to get your ballot cast for our biennial election this time around. So thank you again for taking time today, Glenn. Thank you, listeners, for watching and participating. We'll include in the next slide. Glenn's contact info to ensure that you have his phone number and email in case you have any follow-up questions, suggestions, um, et cetera. Thank you again, and quick reminder, we do this because Franklin matters.
Thank you, Steve, and God bless.